I'm gonna go ahead and get started and call this meeting to order. Councilmember Lennart is in the back handling some business, but he'll join us shortly. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Good evening. Yes. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Here.
Mayor Protem Daly?
Here.
Mayor Duper?
Here.
And the Councilman Lennart is here, you said as well?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you very much. There were no closed sessions, question items this evening, but we're gonna start with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance by Dr. Rigsby.
Our Lord is with me. Dear Lord, we ask once again for your presence and your guidance as we deliberate on issues affecting your city. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands. That one mission and our honor indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Pretty sure I could hear Dick Wiley in there joining us with the pledge. Thanks, Dick. Okay, Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you, moving on to public comment. This is time for the public to comment on anything that is not on the agenda. I have three speakers so far. Call it Ms. Julie Stocker. It's on the agenda? Okay, alright. We'll come back to you then, Mr. -- the Honorable Mr. Milford Harrison.
Thank you. Oh boy, there it is. Back it up a little bit. Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. It's good to be here again. Been gone for a couple of weeks, missed your last meeting. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the citizens of Loma Linda for the incredible privileges that I've had over the years of representing the citizens of this city. And once again, on November 8th, I was elected by the citizens of this city and Grand Terrace and Redlands for another four years on the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Board, which is a tremendous privilege to serve on and which we commit ourselves to making sure that there's plenty of water for Loma Linda and all of the cities in our area. And we're doing our best to maintain that and to look into the future to make sure it's here for our our children and our grandchildren and beyond. But I want to thank everyone for the support in this last election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's good to have you, we're very proud of the work that you do, sir. Okay, so our next two speakers are listed item number one to speak about, so we will move on to our scheduled items. Mr. City Manager, or...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita. I am the City Planner and recently promoted Director of the Community Development Department here with the City of Loma Linda. And tonight I have the pleasure of presenting Precise Planner Design Application P-22004. The applicant is Lennar Homes, and they submitted a Precise Planner Design Application to construct 51 single-family residences, also known as the residential estates, and develop five lettered lots within the approved subdivision found in Planning Area 36 of the Grove specific plan. I think this council approved that subdivision map back in July. There will be four types of architectural styles in this development, and they include Craftsman, Prairie, California Ranch, and Modern Farmhouse. I do wanna note that California Ranch and Modern Farmhouse are not in the Historical Mission Overlay District Ordinance. However, the specific plan states that these specific two styles can be used if approved by all three approval bodies, Historical Planning and City Council. So that it's a nice change from Mediterranean Revival, which we have been seeing a lot of the past five years. So I'm excited to present that to you in this presentation later on. There will also be three different floor plans ranging from 2,767 square feet to 4,122 square feet in size. There'll be single and two-story homes available, and they'll have either a two- or three-car garage. Historical Commission did review and approve this specific project that I'm going to present to you tonight, March of this year, and Planning Commission reviewed and approved it last week. At the Planning Commission meeting last week, the commissioners voted unanimously in favor to approve the project. However, they did have five additional conditions, so they -- I mean, sorry, they had three additional conditions. I have a summarized version on the screen. The first condition was to provide a minimum of two types of fast-growing trees to provide substantial shade along the Zanga Trail and all of the park open landscaping areas, and also to make sure that whatever's developed on Mission Road, that that plant palette also matches across the street. So basically to use the same types of trees on Mission Road to be consistent. The second condition that they added that night was to install a natural shade structure with lighting for the mailbox clusters. And the third one was to revise the elevations, so the siding such as brick or stone veneer wraps around and continues the front elevation and side portions of the structures. So basically, just to explain that last one, what you might have seen on the plans is brick siding only facing the front, but the Planning Commission wants them to wrap it around, so if you're driving by, you don't see a white wall as well, you see the brick going all the way to the back to the fencing. And as we go through the designs, and I have a lot of slides tonight, if you want me to stop and explain anything, just don't be shy, just ask me. Yes, sir.
If you can go to the previous slides, the conditions. Has the developer agreed to those, or what's the status of those three contingencies?
That is an excellent question, I'm actually glad you brought it up, I was gonna save it for the end of the presentation. The developer has not fully agreed to condition number two. He actually, before this meeting today, he asked for clarification and possibly an amendment. So my last slide for this presentation will -- I am going to provide you his recommended amendment. As you all know, when we're here in meetings, sometimes it's not clear what the intent was when they make motions. However, I have a slide verbatim what was said. And so we will address that at the end of the meeting if you don't mind then.
And numbers one and three?
Well, the applicant was only inquiring about number two. But we can discuss one and three as well.
Are we to assume numbers one and three are...
We could assume, but I like the idea we will give him the opportunity to comment on that. I agree, fair enough. Okay. So the 22 and a half acre vacant site is located south of Citrus Avenue, north of Mission Road, and intersected by Bryn Mawr. It is flat with some vegetation such as the existing citrus trees near the Frank Adobe site. It is within Planning Area 36 of the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan and Special Planning Area D. It is zoned planned community and intended for very low-density residential. Surrounding uses include single-family SFR residential to the south. To the east, or to the east is the Citrus Trails Residential Development and a pedestrian pasail. To the north is a recently approved medium-density residential condo project, as well as a 16-acre park. Again, that one too was approved last year. And to the west of the site are other single-family homes, as well as a vacant institutional-zoned or intended property for institutional. So that gives you an idea of the existing setting. Site plan: The site will comprise of 51 minimum 10,000-square-foot residential lots and five-lettered lots. The largest lot will be over 22,000 square feet. Main access is through Citrus Avenue and Bryn Mawr, and they will tie into four new streets within the development. The five-lettered lots will include the Frank Adobe property, related on- and off-site improvements, and a trail that aligns with the historic Zanga Channel. It's to the left side of this screen. The project is complying with lot coverage and setback standards, as well as the minimum 30-feet building-to-building separation requirement. As required by the specific plan, the homes on Mission Road, right here where my -- if you can see my pointer, will face Mission Road. The street will be widened to meet city standards, and the existing power poles will be placed underground. As recommended during the subdivision review from a few months back, the applicant has moved the one large mailbox that was originally going to be right next to the Zanga Trail in the public park area and placed them inside and adjacent to the homes instead, inside the track. So there will now be two different mailbox locations instead of one large one. Staff reviewed this packet multiple times to ensure compliance with the city's water, sewer, and street requirements, including emergency access and the undergrounding of all utilities. A conceptual landscape and fencing plan has been provided to show the proposed plotting of fencing shrubs, trees, and ground covers throughout the site. There will be over 123,000 square feet of open space and landscaping throughout the development, with a minimum of two trees for every lot as required by our code. The Frank Adobe, along with several existing orange trees and historic irrigation standpipes, will be preserved in place or within the lettered lot. When I say lettered lot, I'm referring to, if you can see my pointers where the Frank Adobes are, that's lettered lot A, and this one's lettered lot C, this public landscaping strip. At the bottom left-hand corner of the screen will be a pocket part that will tie in nicely with the existing South Park and Zanga Trail next door in the Citrus Trails development. So this is a sample diagram of the Frank Adobe and the public park and trail. This is conceptual, and it's not part of the project, so the applicant is not developing the future Frank Adobe Cultural Center. However, as part of their conditions and original mitigation requirement, they will preserve the structure by installing a new roof and providing structural reinforcement. The Two Canyons Conservancy Group, who you've all met a few meetings back, they do have plans to develop the site as a future educational center, and they will install interpretive signage along the trail portion adjacent to their site that will feature the history of citrus farming and the indigenous people of the area. Again, this is just conceptual in nature, just where you can see how the two development projects or the two residential developments will tie into each other. And here's a front yard typical. All front yards and parkways will be landscaped by the developer and include irrigation equipment. This plan also illustrates the 12-foot landscape parkway and sidewalk. The specific plan calls out for a six-foot perimeter wall for Planning Area 36. The applicant is proposing a split-faced block wall with decorative stone veneer pilasters dispersed throughout to help break up the walls. As approved by council this past summer, the applicant switched the vinyl gates to a tubular steel with mesh, which will be attached to split-faced block on each side, offering more durability. The interior fencing will remain vinyl as originally proposed and as recommended in the specific plan. The three-floor plans will range from 2,767 square feet to 4,122 square feet. As I stated earlier, the homes will have two or three garages, anywhere from four to seven bedrooms, and all of the regular amenities such as a kitchen, living, dining, as well as a retreat area, a loft, pantry, mudroom, laundry, and a covered patio. The larger homes will have a next-gen space. The intent for this community is to create unique homes with ample variety. As a result, no two homes next to or across from each other will have the same combination of plan, elevation, and color scheme. Many of the homes will not be repeated throughout the entire community, and more than 50% of the homes are either unique or will only be repeated one other time. So now to get to the fun stuff, the architectural elevations.
Can you bring the microphone down closer to you?
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was talking too loud. So the next few slides will include images of the enhanced elevations of each architectural type. I'll start with the largest option available and work my way down. So this is the Modern Farmhouse. The Modern Farmhouse's common architectural features include A-shaped or gabled roofs, steeper than what we normally see, lots of windows, and vaulted ceilings in key areas that bring a sense of grandeur to the interior. Most tend to be painted white and include dark-colored roofing. This specific home will have dark-concrete, flat tile roofing with gray wooden board and battened siding, yellow shutter accents, white-colored stucco, and a yellow door. The Prairie elevation type typically emphasizes horizontal lines, shallow-hipped roof lines, rows of windows, bands of stone and wood, and stucco. This prairie has light-gray colored stucco accompanied by lapped siding, jagged stone veneer wainscot, and slate-like roof tile with yellow doors. The third elevation Craftsman, a style that you're familiar with, will have a low-pitched gable, stucco walls, a simulated roof wood shake, brick wainscot, board and battened siding, and will have exposed rafter tails along with a covered front porch with square columns supporting the roof. Depending on the floor plan chosen, there will be accent colors similar to brown, olive, green, tan, maroon, and even yellow. The last floor plan, our single-story home, is the California Ranch. So California Ranch is typically an asymmetrical, single-story home, designated with earthy tones and materials that blend with nature. They have low-pitched roof lines, brick and stucco are common exterior materials. This California Ranch style proposes light-tanned-colored stucco siding, simulated roof wood shake, brick wainscot, and gray shutter accents. Right here to my side, you do have a copy in your packet, a material and colors board, but we have a physical one if any of you guys want to come to the front and to take a look at the colors and the materials being proposed throughout the development. So here's the street scene rendering of what the neighborhood would look like if it was built out, and a copy has been provided to you, and that is also included in your packet. And that's just color material board, just pointing it out that you've also received the digital version. So like with any project, we do have to go through environmental CEQA review. So for this specific site, we did -- this council adopted the Environmental Impact Report in 2018 for the entire specific plan area. The previously adopted EIR adequately analyzed the project site and use. The project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15-182, which provides an exemption for residential projects located in a specific plan area where a public agency has already prepared an EIR in a specific plan, and that residential project is undertaken pursuant to and in conformity with that specific plan. Public noticing, all projects require public noticing. Public hearing notices for this project were mailed to property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the project site on August 25th, 2002 for the City Council meeting. At the October 10 meeting, this council formally continued the item to today, December 13. In accordance with the Brown Act, the notice for this project and meeting date was also posted at our three regular locations, as well as the city website, and at the project site. As of the date of this report, the city has not received any written comments in favor or opposition of the project. All projects require findings, there is a long list of findings in your staff report for this project. Findings made showed the proposed project is consistent with the applicable general plan and zoning destinations, and that the site is suitable for the proposed density of development. Staff also drafted conditions of approval for the project, and those are included in your staff report as well. And the mitigation measures, as I already mentioned earlier, from the adopted EIR will continue to apply for this site and every site within the specific plan area. So to conclude, the applicant has made every effort possible to provide the most appropriate design and layout. The project complies with the goals of the general plan and the specific plan. It's compatible with the existing and future uses in the area. Conditions are in place to ensure appropriate compliance with mitigations and city standards. And findings were provided in support of the current proposal. Staff, Historical Commission, and Planning Commission request that City Council take the following actions. One, determine the project exempt from CEQA. Two, ratify the certificate of appropriateness for Precise Planner Design Permit 22004. And just as a reminder, we do a certificate of appropriateness for this permit is because we're in the historical district, so any development and changes in the historical district require a certificate of appropriateness, which was already reviewed and approved by Historical Commission as well. And number three, lastly, approve the actual Precise Planner Design Permit for the architectural styles and configuration of the 51 single-family residential lot development in Planning Area 36 of the Grove specific plan. Our recommendation is based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval and original mitigation measures adopted in 2018. I could answer questions, or I can invite the applicant to go over the question that you asked earlier. How would you guys like to proceed?
I guess we could maybe start with some questions to you, and then if you can't answer them, maybe the applicant could come up.
Okay, and so just let me know when you wanted to talk about the conditions, the added conditions.
Okay, maybe we could save that for the end. Okay, who's going first?
I'll start off. Thank you for that presentation. So far, I've approved everything that's come over for this piece of land that we have. Looking at this, my main concern is, you mentioned that the purpose is to have unique homes with ample variety. Looking at some of these, I don't see what's unique about them. They just don't scream anything different, right, like from something we can get in any other region. I'm trying to think like what we can do better for our residents, because we have to have high standards. With these colors, are we locked into these?
We're not locked into the specific colors, but the specific plan does state that it should be earthy tones and natural materials and colors used for this area, in accordance with what the historical ordinance also states.
Are these semi-custom?
That is the wording that we were sort of throwing around at one point. But I guess that's up for interpretation and definition as semi-custom, because there will be repeats within, in the community, but they're intending not to repeat as much as other communities.
Okay, so what is semi-custom about these? Like in our definition, what would it be?
I think everybody has an individual subjective type of definition. I think I would define it as, for the majority of them will be unique. Majority of the residences on the lot would be unique, if anything, no more than two of the same.
Okay, I'd like to keep that same question for the representative that comes up next, but one more question for you. Can you go to the rendering slide that you had? Okay, so I love how that looks on here. How come we didn't have that in the current homes that we built out?
I'm not understanding the question, the render?
And from the sidewalk? How come we don't have that in current state for the other Lennar homes?
Okay, no, that's a great question. Unfortunately, it was missed, and I would agree with you. I wish we did have that parkway in the adjacent development.
Okay, so there's no risk of this not getting built out? Because it's in the plan, like this is gonna look like?
With the -- yes, and that's in the staff report, and it's in the preliminary grading that I have provided you guys with today. I didn't go into details in this presentation, because I already had 21 slides, but we do have it 12 feet wide with sidewalk and parkway, the whole walking area. So in my opinion, there's no risk unless something happens in the market with the developer. But that is a requirement for this specific development, and it's already on the preliminary grading plan, and we've already talked it through with the developer.
Okay, I'm gonna follow up on that question. So I know you said that we missed the sidewalk piece. One other criticism that I've received from residents that are currently living in that area is that there are no trees, it looks very, I don't wanna say industrial, but it looks bland, right? I know you mentioned that we're gonna do a better job on this one. Is there, in one of the pictures that you had, there was a tree on in front of every house? Is it gonna look like that in reality as well?
No matter what, the code requires two trees per house. The way that the other development...
Bring the microphone down.
Okay, so the way that the other development has it is two trees actually within the front yard, but the way that the code was written is that they could either be in the parkway or in the front yard. For this specific development, we're gonna have it in both, the front yard and the parkway.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll go next. I was just curious whether or not there was any thought in it. I mean, I didn't mean it to be a smart idea, I'm not sure how I even feel about it, but I was gonna ask whether or not there would be access to the trail from some of those houses on either side of the trail. So for example, from the backyard, will they be able to go out their backyard and go back out into the trail, or is that not such a good idea?
Are you talking about the existing homes?
No, the, these, so like 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19?
Okay, I wanna assume that there won't be initial access, but I guess it's really dependent on the future owner, whether or not he wants to put a gate.
Because like, okay, because this isn't an HOA, I guess anybody can basically modify their own back wall. Okay, I was just curious, and that's not that big of a deal. I guess, the other thing too, this is more of a comment, you can go back to that slide right there, it was great. I guess when I was trying to envision how the Adobe was going to look and that that cultural center, whatever it's gonna be, I didn't realize there was gonna be two homes to the east of that.
Right here?
No, so 14 and 15, I didn't realize were actually gonna be homes. And I think I kinda like that, it kinda, it helps kind of, it makes it feel like the Adobe Park is connected to the whole project. For some reason, I was thinking that was, it was gonna be further east. Anyway, I don't know why I didn't figure that out, but...
And as a reminder, this is the Adobe site, and right adjacent east of the site is the lot that they donated, yes.
Yeah, I figured that. Yeah, I know, I like it, looks good.
If I can follow up on that. Neither in my paper copy or on the slide, I can't see what's between the Adobe and Lot 14. What are those gray areas? They're labeled, but I can't read them.
Those are current homes.
Oh, right here, yes, those are existing homes, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Solar. These will all include solar, I think that's part of the city mandate, right?
State law.
Yeah, well, I just, I didn't hear or read anything about that, so I wanted to be sure that was gonna be included. By the way, maybe this is a question for the City Manager, because as I look around Loma Linda, I see different kinds of solar. Some are small units on big roofs, some the whole roof is solar. How does that work?
I could probably answer that.
Go for it.
I think that, no offense to anybody, but the developer's gonna put in the minimum that they have to when they build those new houses. When you see the new houses coming in, they're gonna put the smallest one that they could possibly to meet, to meet state law, and then I would assume if a homeowner wants to add to it or put something in on their own, it would be bigger. That's my guess, am I correct?
Because I don't have solar, I'm interested in putting it in, so I've been doing a little research. Not all solar units are created equal, that much I've learned for sure. And size is a factor. So is the mayor correct that the ordinance for the city is whatever the minimum state requirement is?
What it is, is they have to calculate energy consumption for the house, and make sure that the solar panel is adequate for the use. So they're not gonna put too small of the panel.
Yeah, I understand, well, I don't understand what that means, because I have a neighbor that had solar put on, and he said it's good. So I said, well, you're in great shape then, if we lose electricity in the summer. He says, well, yeah, sort of maybe, that the unit he has up will run the refrigerator and, I don't know, a couple of appliances for a few hours, and that's it.
Well, it's, again, it's a battery too, the battery.
Exactly. That's part of the unit, yeah.
Yes, and the new panel is a lot more efficient than the old one they used to have up on...
Well, this was just within the last year this guy had.
So it's a better quality of...
But he says he only gets a few hour out of a few appliances, not including air conditioner.
That's why I don't have one.
Okay, so my question again is, what's the basis for the city mandate?
It's state mandate, there's no city mandate.
It's a state mandate. So the city's requirement is whatever the minimum state mandate is, is that correct?
Are you guys familiar with it? Are you guys familiar with it?
Well, yeah, so that could be shame on us.
Good afternoon, Matthew with Lennar here.
Can you step up to the mic, thank you?
Yes, Matthew with Lennar. Thank you all for the time, and we're looking forward to this community coming up, starting hopefully next year. With regard to solar, so the Title twenty-four requires that, there's a certain amount of, as, as Jarv mentioned, there's a certain amount of calculation required for Title twenty-four. And generally, from what I understand, the mandate is for, kind of on an average price or average consumption based on the size of the home. It's supposed to be electric, electric net zero. Kind of on an average basis, average usage over the year. So the units are sized to be able to provide sufficient power to offset the use of the home on average, based on the size of it. Now, there is no storage requirement, so there's no battery being installed at these homes, but the units are sized based on that standard on the code. And so depending on which home you drive by, if it's a two thousand-plus square foot or the four thousand-plus, the panels on them will be sized differently. And also, there's other variations to it. For instance, if, depending on how much of it is facing the sun, we have a consultant that calculates every solar system for every home. So every home is essentially kind of unique in terms of, in terms of the size of the panel and where it's located and, and how much they get, so.
Well, and I, I recognize this is, you know, the question I'm posing i- is not one to be solved by the developer. I, I understand and accept that. I am saying I think the city needs to take a look at it, because I think it's the Wild West out there right now. Is the impression I have, because I know of two homes, identical floor plans, the solar units are very, very different. Now, neither of them were built when there was this state solar requirement. That's where the Wild West starts.
He just mentioned it's a state mandate that net zero. So the solar panel have to take care of the electricity that being used by the home.
Yeah, but he also said net average. I don't know what that means. I mean, if you, if you, if you check in July versus this month, your average is gonna be very, very different. And, and it's a discussion in the neighborhood I live in right now, because different, everybody's buying solar, but it's, it's, there's very little consensus.
Are they, are they, and just a question, are they buying? I think our standards as a new builder are different in terms of the size of the unit, rather than somebody that owns it and kind of decides this is how much solar I wanna put on.
I agree.
That could be driving the size of the units as well.
And that's exactly what's happening. And what I'm suggesting, not for this project, because that wouldn't be fair to the developer, you guys. But I am suggesting the city ought to take a look at this too, because it, it's all, there's a lot of variation in there right now. And there's a lot of neighbors comparing nodes, well, you know, my solar company told me this. Well, my solar company told me something different, and we got units like this and units like this. And so it's not standardized, is the point that I'm making. And whether or not the city should try to do that, that's a whole different question, but I think it's one that we ultimately at some point probably ought to address. Okay. For, I also wanna compliment the developer in the, the, the size of the homes, the square footage. I, I appreciate that you've got decent-sized homes that fit the consumers that I think are interested in this community, as opposed to postage-stamped homes on a postage-stamped lot. And, you know, the square footage is totally vertical. I also wanna compliment you in that a couple of things. One is the development that you built that's adjacent to this, I've heard many good compliments about. And it looks nice. I drive through there periodically. And so you've developed a good product that I think the consumers, at least that I've interacted with, seem pleased with. So that, that's good too. Couple of other questions. The mayor referred to HOA, and I didn't see that in here, but this will be HOA or no HOA?
No HOA.
Okay, why is that?
Generally, we provide HOAs when there is common area spaces that need to be maintained by the HOA. In this case, the slides that Lorena showed, for instance, the front yard, typicals or the landscaping, a lot of that is still going to be homeowner-maintained. The only items that are not going to be homeowner-maintained are the Zanha Trail, as well as the landscaping area that goes on the side of the community, which will be turned into, turned over to the city. But everything else is homeowner-maintained here, so there's really no need for an HOA at this, at this community. And it keeps the cost lower for the homeowners, so.
No, your logic, your logic is solid. If I drive around the neighborhoods of Loma Linda, I can tell which ones are HOA and which ones are not. Unfortunately, not all homeowners take the same pride on maintaining their yards and flowers and so forth. And we've got some pretty dingy-looking places right now as far as upkeep of yards are concerned, and some in some fairly nice neighborhoods.
You know, there, there is, just to maybe be able to make a comment on that, there is a set of CCNRs that will be recorded against this tract.
Can you step up?
Yeah, so the CCNRs that will be recorded against this tract will have a certain amount of guidelines for the maintenance requirements to, of the homeowners. So in terms of the design requirements, maintenance of the landscaping, front yards, the way they can, you know, essentially, just to kind of provide that HOA sense, but without having a body to actually enforce it there. So if there are complaints, or if somebody is not keeping their property, then the CCNRs that are recorded against the, the tract and every one of the homes on that site will have that enforcement, will provide that enforcement ability.
By the city?
Yes.
It all sounds good, and I appreciate the effort to put guidelines in there to encourage people. Unfortunately, there's no teeth in it if, if people elect to just let weeds grow but keep the weeds mowed, which is what we do see. But I, I understand what you're saying. The, the colors, there's been a couple of comments on the colors. I think you've done more with color than in some of the others developments we've had, and I appreciate that. And I've talked with a number of people. I understand there are risks when you get a little too bold with the colors. And I don't have an answer for that, but, but beige homes drive me crazy, because probably half the homes in Loma Linda are some version of beige. And I get really bored with that, and other people do too. But, you know, I, again, that, I'm, I'm posing a question for which I have no answer. I know when I go travel in Europe, especially in environments that tend to be cloudy and rainy, you see a lot of bold, pretty colors that really change the environment. But we live in the desert, and, and I think I'm, my color tastes are out of step with where most people are probably at. But I, I appreciate that at least I, I see you've got kind of a dark yellow, and you've got some white, and so that's, that's better than most of the developments we have in our neighborhood from recent years. I think when you've been in here before, and certainly other developers, I've commented that, you know, the house we live in, which was a development thirty-plus years ago, they put double doors in. We get complimented, complimented by people that move furniture in and out, or pianos, or whatever. They really appreciate that. And I'm assuming it's a cost issue, that double doors are more expensive, or is that a matter of taste? But we never, ever, ever see developments come in here, even expensive developments with double doors.
In, in this case, we did consider it. We, generally, and Jeff, he's, he's the architect and designer on this, for this community, but we did consider double doors. A lot of times, we end up having maintenance issues with them. So it's, they're just more hardware, so they end up breaking. And, and so that ends up being an issue for the homeowners, as well as just, they're just, you have more hardware, so they're less safe. And also, it seems to me, from what I understand, also, back when double doors were bigger in the trend, and Jeff can maybe comment on that more, it was, it was a matter of having smaller doors as a standard for the entry to the home. But now that we're going with three-foot doors, they're a bit larger, and so you, you kind of, you don't need that anymore. With our designs as well, if you end up introducing the double doors in the front, they end up kind of disrupting the entry to the homes, and you end up kind of pushing walls in and out in a way that, that interacts with the other habitable spaces and kind of squeezes them as well. So for these floor plans, generally, that single door is, is a better option, so.
I'm not asking you to change your design. I mean, I'm way out of my lane if I would do that. I'll just say, we've had double doors, been in the house for over thirty years, and I never had an issue. Not, not, the maintenance issue I don't buy, because if, if they're good, solid doors, that's not a problem. Yeah, I don't know.
I, I'm smelling, or cigarette smoke. I'm smelling it.
I'm-
Smells like fine Colombian.
I'm, yeah, I'm guessing-
John Lennar would know.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing there's a transient smoking right outside the wall out here.
I smell it too, yeah.
That's what it smells like.
I, I think that covers my comments, but, you know, my overall impression is very positive.
Thank you.
I appreciate the good work you've done in our city up to this point. And, and I hope and believe that this development will enable us to even be a better neighborhood. This will be even a better neighborhood than what you've already done. So this has been a good partnership, and I appreciate your hard work and the good work you've done from everything I've heard.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to the team as well.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, we're all gonna get the munchies up here. We're in a cloud of reefer madness. I just have a general comment about all tract homes. It's not Lennar's fault, but the garages are just too stinking small. You know, you, if you have an SUV, forget it. You're gonna park it on the, on the driveway. And, you know, twenty feet, eight inches, including the back wall, it's like twenty feet. There's no room for cabinets, no room for workspace. You can barely fit a sedan in there. But that's, that's the way it is. My garage is twenty-five feet, and I love it.
He has parties in his garage. Okay, follow-up question?
Two questions for-
Yes, sir.
So the question I had asked earlier, semi-custom, what is our definition?
Yeah, so when, when we initially started on this community, the semi-custom language was part of, I believe, the specific plan, correct? But when Lennar was kind of brought on board on this, we don't do custom homes. And a lot of times, our, the level of options that we provide, we try to kind of maximize the, the bang for the buck that the homeowner can get, so we give him the best that we can get, and then we, we limit the options. But in terms of the semi-custom in this community, this one I could tell you that has, it has one of the largest varieties that, that we would have for a community of this size. So on fifty-one homes, we're providing right now four different elevations. Every home, every plant type is repeated seventeen times. So you end up with four different elevations, some of them only being, some of them only apply to one of the home, one of the plants, which is the wrench, the single-story. And then which it, with, with each one of those, you have three elevate, you have four elevations, and then each elevation has three different color schemes. So you end up with this variety of homes that end up being on this track, that it was our effort to kind of fulfill as much of that custom language that the specific plan required. But if you're asking if individuals can customize their homes before they buy them, they can after they have closed. But on, on our end, the, the customization comes, that language is more in, for this community is just in the way that homes are just barely repeated on the entire community, so.
So say I'm a home buyer. I'm looking for a home. I come to you, and I have a lot in mind. You mentioned there's different options available. Do I get to pick what option? Or are, do you already have it all planned out, and you're gonna tell me which lots I can get them from?
So, let me go back to the, so this document right here is our planning document, which we have worked with Lorena on this. So the, all the homes are plotted at this point. So if you look at the, well, this one doesn't, it, well, it's cropped out, but every one of those colors represents a different type of home. So when you come, you will go to the model homes on the bottom, homes sites two and three. And then the sales team will show you what the plotting is for the entire community and what the phasing is for the community. And generally, in every phase, you have the variety of the different plant types. And you can visit the lots, see if you like it, the size of it, and the home that sits on it, and you'll make that selection. But, and then we'll be building the community by the phase. So in terms of your, your selection options, you can select the home you want, but they're paired with the lots. So once this site plan is approved, the plotting is essentially set. We don't change it.
Got it. So there's really nothing I can, I can do, right? Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking. Okay, thank you. Last question from my end. When are these houses gonna be built and ready for sale?
Well, um-
He's looking. He's in the market right now, so the sooner you get him done.
Well, you can call me. We have other communities, but for this one, we are hoping to start, well, at this point, our schedule, based on market conditions and all things happening, we are currently actually not the owners of this tract. We're hoping to become the owners of it sometime this year, and hopefully start grading operations on it in August of next year. So we're hoping to close on it by next year and start grading operations sometime in August. So in terms of the actual homes, the, we're, based on a preliminary schedule layout, we're looking probably of having models sometime by summer of twenty-twenty-four at this point. But that's all kind of based on market conditions and, and how things go, but most likely not sooner, unless if things change.
So if market conditions decline, you're gonna be extending that date out even further?
Well, yeah, of course. Well, it, it all, it all really kind of depends on how much they decline and, and, and what we're, it's just, there's a lot of variables involved, so I wouldn't be able to kind of comment on moving it out or in. I can just tell you that at this point, based on what we're looking at, we're looking at an August grading start.
Thank you.
Just some background on this. We envisioned this as being a fully custom neighborhood. And then in the process of preparing it at the city level, which is kind of analogous to the developer level, we downgraded it because of just reality to semi-custom, and then it kind of slid into a tract home. So it's not, it's not custom, it's not semi-custom, it's just bigger houses on bigger lots, and it's a tract. So it's not what we envisioned, but we tried.
Yes, good.
Back on landscaping. You envision grass in the front yard, backyard, any kind of patio slab in the backyards? Because there's quite a differential in the lot sizes.
Yeah, so typically on, at this community or communities like this, we would provide the homeowners with the front yard landscaping.
Front yard only?
Yes. The rear yards are essentially up to them to design however they like. They have a certain period of time to do that work, but generally, we don't provide rear yard landscaping. Now, again, because of market conditions, that might change down the road. We might provide that as a service to them or as an option. But at this point, rear yards- But at this point, rear yards are not typically designed. So rear yards are up to them. They can put whatever they want on there. If they need permits, they would be coming to the city for pools, trellises, California rooms, anything else they want to add in the back.
I hear you. I don't like it, but I hear you. People tend to maintain what's in there better than, you know. I know too many homes where they never really do evolve the backyard where, where it should be. And then we get complaints from neighbors about dust and animals and all kinds of other stuff. Is that something, what, what's the problem with, 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 it's not that much higher expenditure to put a small slab for a patio and surround it with grass in the backyard? So I'm trying to understand, it can't be a cost issue?
No, a lot of times, we find that the homeowners actually want to be able to customize their rear yards themselves. So they, sometimes they want to have, you know, when, like, for instance, when we, what, what ends up happening is in a community like this, once the homes are sold, we, somebody like me on my end, starts getting all kinds of designs from the homeowners on what they want to pull in the rear yards. And sometimes, some of them want to put storage boxes in there. Some of them want to do a full-on pool and patio and all that. What we put in there might not be what they want. So they would, there would be an additional expense incurred by them for us to put it in because it's, for instance, if it's required or something by the city, for us to put it in, just for them to have to rip it out because they don't want it. So a lot of times, in the rear yards, we, it's, now, on some communities now, what we've done is we're offering them something very minimal, if that's what they want. Basically, a slab and some landscaping around it, generally turf, if that's what they want, but.
So you say you are willing to offer that for homeowners that choose to get that?
Well, it really, it's not something that we typically do. And it's very much an exception to the rule. And generally, homeowners don't want it. So for instance, I can.
I don't buy that. I don't buy that. Well, if it costs extra, if it costs extra.
Well, that's what it would be. It would be at a cost. So when we're offering them, it's an option that they have to purchase from us, for us to go in there and install it for them. And a lot of times, you know, they have just moved in. Maybe they want to landscape it six months in, or nine months in, or a year in. Or they want to have somebody come in and customize the landscaping for them. So we don't typically offer a rear yard package for our homeowners. And the front yard is, is a lot of times designed for them.
This is coming back to what Councilman Rigsby was talking about, why we want a custom homes that, you know, we wouldn't have a hodgepodge of backyards. We would have, and people can always customize it. When we bought our house, there was lawn front and back. And then as we were able to afford to do landscaping the way we wanted it and, and so forth, we did that. And that's what everybody else in our neighborhood did as well. And I don't think that's a bad idea. I, I think that it, it cheapens the whole product when you just leave dirt in the backyard. An opinion. Second question. To follow up on, I think it was Councilman Gendal was asking about the size of the trees. Some of the developments we have have little sticks in the front yard with posts holding them up. How mature are the trees going to be that you provide?
So for this community, at this point, if you.
Because it looks good, looks good there. How many gallons would you say that is?
The requirement right now for the trees that you see at the street level are twenty-four-inch boxes. Generally, that's the largest kind of for.
Okay.
For a development like this that are required.
That works.
So that's what you'll be getting.
Yeah. And what kind of trees are, have you decided that?
Well, we had a, if you look at the landscaping sheet that's in your package, we had a list of trees that we had proposed that are compliant with the specific plan and, and the kind of the California, I think it's the landscaping requirements, the guidelines that we have in terms of how much water they can use. One of the planning commissioners recommended that we introduce faster-growing trees within some of the main streets, essentially in the community. And, and we are okay with exploring that and introducing those kind of trees. So they would provide additional shade, and we'll be working with the planning department on that. But they'll be at a minimum twenty-four-inch box trees. And we just have to, I can't tell you what specific type of tree it would be because we'll have to kind of make sure it falls within all the appropriate guidelines in terms of the species and the type and all of that that we use.
Well, the basis of my question is, we have a number of neighborhoods that have had magnolia or sycamore trees. And sycamore trees are what they put in our development. And vast majority of people pulled them out within a year or two because, you know, when the fall comes, those are ugly brown leaves, and they grow like weeds and, anyway. And there are much better options than that. So I would be interested to see what our guidelines are on what types of trees as well. I'm less concerned with how fast they grow than what they look like when they're put in and what they're gonna look like when they're mature.
I think a comment for the city manager and you as well. IERCD, I think, is a good opportunity to maybe involve them and like get what's best for the community, and will look nice.
The city park, my staff in the park division, they do review the type of trees because they have to maintain those trees. So they don't want the trees that grow, even though they're too fast, but we just have to keep maintaining it, so.
And it's gotta be congruent with all the development on the other side of Mission.
Right.
It's gotta look like the, like the community, so. Okay. Any more questions from the dais? We do have a public comment, we're gonna have to open a public hearing.
What, what are we here to do tonight? This is a first reading, correct?
It, it only requires one reading.
One reading, just to approve.
It's not an ordinance, so it's just to approve the actual project.
Tonight is thumbs up or thumbs down?
Correct. Now, did, did you, I know you brought up earlier the conditions. Would you like to discuss that now as part of? Okay. So my, my last slide, I did provide the exact wording of the conditions in the conditions of approval that are in your packet, as well as verbatim, the exact wording from the planning commissioners. And at the end, the third paragraph is the wording that the applicant is requesting. So more or less, the three are gonna be very similar. But the applicant does have his reasoning as why he wants to, one, just provide clarification and a slight amendment for his, for that specific condition that the planning commission recommended last week.
Can I ask you a question? What is natural shade structure? Tree, that's, that was what I had in my head.
Staff was, staff was confused too. Staff was confused too.
I don't, I don't think that's, I, I under-, having a community mailbox, I understand the premise. The premise is to have something that covers you when you're standing in front of the mailbox when it's raining. And I don't know that a tree does that, or adequately, at least until it's grown. And, and then there's other issues related to the water damage and things like that that, that gets caused to those mailboxes. But I think I, I would interpret that as something to protect from the elements, but I, I don't know. That's, that's not clear.
Yeah. If I could recall correctly, I think the biggest concern was just the hot hundred-degree day to go get your mail. Like I said, we were confused too of natural shade structure. And we did ask for clarification, and even then, it, it wasn't that clear. So staff did our best. I did my best interpreting their word-for-word verbatim recommendation. And so my text is in blue, and that is the text that's in the conditions of approval. The applicant was given a chance to read through it, and that's why he's coming before you for a slight clarification and amendment.
Can I, can I suggest that possibly, when Chairman, I think he's still Chairman, Nichols said, do you want to consider an actual, an actual, an actual shade structure? Maybe she heard natural, and she just repeated it.
Oh, there you go.
That could be very true. Because we were confused. Like I said, staff was confused with natural and structure, what.
She was repeating what he said, and he said, "an actual."
An actual, okay.
I think natural is a misinterpretation by her or by us.
So I'll pass it on over to the applicant, where he can, again, make his comments and share them with you.
Can you put it in a building?
So, yeah. Has, has everyone had a chance to read the different staffs, staffs? And then the applicant's version of it?
Appropriate shading, lighting, and place the boxes of shade trees and street lighting. Does UPS really determine the boxes, box locations?
A lot of times they do. Most of the times they do. So what ends up happening is, that's part of the issue with, with this. So initially, when the planning commission came with that suggestion, came up with that suggestion, I, you know, on our side, we did our best effort, I did my best effort to kind of get to the, get before meeting with, with you gentlemen on, kind of just to see where, how we would be able to implement something like that. A lot of times, when we have mailbox clusters that have any kind of structure around or on top of them, they're either in a park, or they're in a rec building, or they're in a larger area where you can actually put a shade structure or something covering it on it. In this case, we have a sidewalk, and then we have a approximately seven-foot side yard, which, if you look at this plan, so in this plan, is this the pointer? Oh, okay. So in this, if you look at this one, I don't know if you see the dot here. So one of the mailboxes is going to be located here. This is what we're going to be proposing. And one of them is going to be located here. That will serve.
Hold on, I lost your dot.
So right here?
I don't even see, oh, okay.
And then one would be right here.
Now, is that on the homeowner's property?
So, well, actually, so all these, all these homes at this point, when you look at this, when you look at the landscaping plan right here, the front yard, which includes the parkways in the front, are going to be owned by the homeowners. So that includes also the side yards in conditions where homes have.
Go back to, go back, go back one. That one, to me, is easier to understand.
So in this one, this side yard right here, that whole, that whole landscaping area is part of the homeowner's landscaping.
Yeah.
And so we are, at this point, proposing for the mailbox to be located approximately this side or here. It's, it's kind of a double-edged sword with mailboxes a lot of times because you want to provide privacy to the homeowners because you don't want, if you live here, you don't want people constantly to be in front of your house parking. But at the same time, you want to, the mailboxes need to be visible so they're not completely hidden, and, and damage or theft or stuff like that can happen to them. So we're trying to kind of walk that fine line. We're proposing for the mailboxes to be approximately this area, and the other one to be approximately here. So with that said, understanding that the planning commission has concern about shade, which is a valid concern, we would, in, in my language or the proposal that, that we made, is that we would be able to shade these mailboxes with trees that would be around them, next to them, especially these trees that will be growing, to be able to kind of provide some shading around it. If you want, we can put more trees on each side of them. And then there are streetlights that will be installed along here that will be providing lighting as well for the community. Now, another concern with, with providing a, kind of an elaborate cover for a mailbox cluster like this is who will be maintaining it, right? Over time, something like that, this community, again, is not H.I.A. maintained. And so if you end up having an elaborate shade, shade structure on top of it, down the road, it will wear and tear. And it will be on somebody's private property that will be, you know, there will, there will be easement rights given or taken away from them so other people can access the mailboxes and for the post office to be able to access the mailboxes. But at the same time, the post office will not be maintaining the shade structure. Now, that's all assuming that where we are proposing for the mailboxes to go is where the post office will want them. Based on the route, the way they drive, it's kind of like waste management. If they want the units to be in a certain other place, they'll basically say, no, you can't have it where you want it, and it has to be somewhere else.
Is that, that's predetermined before you even start the development, correct?
Well, we a lot of times make the proposal at this stage, and it's on our plans. But then when we proceed further, we have to approach the, the post office, and we present them with our locations. In this case, what we can do is we can work with Lorena and the team to make sure that whatever location they are proposing as well has trees around it and is close enough to a light pole that will provide the lighting. But we initially had the, the mailboxes around this area, which would be part of the landscaping, the LMD area, that would be turned over to the city and maintained. And with that, yes, we could put a pedestal there, put lighting on it. And if the city would like to maintain it, we would be able to put a shade structure there as well. That would be all turned over to the city. But that was, essentially, we were asked to, to not put it in that area along the Zona Trail, which we understand because it's more of a, it's more of a public amenity and, and we don't, we don't need to have the homeowner's mailboxes in that area. So we did relocate them to kind of where I was proposing. But those are kind of our concerns with having a structure around it.
Just a question for you. So the, one, two, three, four, six homes on Mission Road, where does their mail go?
Their mailboxes will actually be similar to, oops, sorry. They will essentially be right in front, similar to kind of the old-fashioned way.
Old style?
Yeah.
Why can't we do that everywhere?
The postal service does not like it at all. So they're the ones that actually, we would love to do that. The postal service will, is actually the one that's requiring us to put the clusters here.
It's interesting. Because they don't, they don't care, they could care less when that thing.
It's just more stops for them.
When it gets broken into and there's damage, then especially not being, because I know you've gone through this in your neighborhood.
We went through it. And, and, and that's the other thing, is, is I'm gonna come back to kind of a preamble that Councilman Rigsby gave, which was that the original plan was that these would be custom homes. And, and they've, for, whether it's market reasons, I'm not sure why, but it's downgraded to the point where it's another series of, of basically stock homes. But this issue of mailboxes is an important one because in the development that I live in, we had, on our street, the mailbox happens to be right down adjacent to my house. And within, within, it was seven or eight months, it got broken into three times from the back, and they steal everything. And it was getting to be a hassle. And we were working with the manager of the Royal Linda Post Office. We even had him come in at one point. And the bottom line is that they said that the earliest they could replace the mailbox that had been, you know, the multi-box thing was six months, and don't count on that. So basically, our street is pretty close. And so we just passed the hat, and we bought our own secure mailbox. And one of the postal guys said, I'll make sure it gets keyed. If you guys buy it and you install it, I'll make sure it gets keyed. And that's exactly what happened. And we had it all done within, it was within a month. And we've had no problems since then, although other, you know, standard mailboxes. So what I'm appealing for is I would still like this community to be kind of an upgraded community. And it, I mean, my goodness, it doesn't cost that much money. I don't remember what we paid. It was less than a thousand dollars for this thing. And we've had no problems, no issues. So if we could upgrade that and not put the bottom standard that the postal service defines in there, but have it an upgraded, more secure mailbox, that would help upgrade the community as well. The, the other comment, just to come back to the trees. You know, I, I want to come back to this tree issue because if we're just going for fast-growing trees, I know what they look like. And I know what the leaves look like. And, and I think that's something that, as a city, we need to reconsider and, and.
We can override the planning commission's standard. Because to me, fast-growing means messy.
I, certainly if you get magnolias, they're messy.
Messy leaves, and, you know, the, if you want big, beautiful, dense leaves, it's a mess.
So in my view, that's important enough that the city, we need to get our act together on that. And as long as you're open to, you know, I mean, we're not gonna go crazy about it, you know, order twenty-year-old palm trees to be put up or something.
Thank you.
But, you know, as long as it's reasonable, then I would hope that you'd be, be willing to go along with that.
Yes, they do submit the landscape architect plan to the city for review.
And that's separate from, from approving the overall project?
Correct. Correct. All of landscaping comes to public work. Correct. Correct. All of landscaping comes to Public Works because it's in a public right of way, we review it.
And it's, it's one of the conditions of approval to submit a final landscaping plan during the plan check process.
So we don't even need to address these, really?
Yeah, if that's the case, but will that come back to us then?
No.
No, it's good to, it's good to-
We're approving the use tonight and the architectural elevations and the configuration of the site. But the final landscaping plan, that's a, that's a condition, a condition of approval to be submitted during the plan check process. But if you guys want to beef up what Planning Commission recommended last week, we can definitely consider that. These specific conditions that are on the, on the screen, those are summarized versions, they're not the formal conditions. The formal conditions are in the last page of your packet for the conditions of approval.
And, and, and trust me, we, we will look at these trees, just like the pepper tree that we, that the planning commission approved and Public Works said, no, Public Works said, no, they overruled us.
And that's the, that's the problem. I think we've got to leave this stuff up to the experts.
Right, because we went here and so we prefer that we have a nice trees that provide shade.
When we start picking stuff and we don't know.
Remember, you want to have a six feet of space to plant. I don't want to plant oak trees that will lift up the sidewalk or curb and gutter within ten years. So, so that won't be looking at.
As a comment, I'm pretty comfortable with not moving forward with item number one and allowing that to go through the, the plan check process through Public Works and get their recommendations. Number two, I think we have a lot of confusion on where those mailboxes will go and I want to elaborate on that in a second. Number three, do you guys have any issue with number three?
Yes, I have a concern with it. And essentially, if you want, I can kind of walk you through the, on the design, how that could be a concern for us. So a lot of times, and we understand the planning commission's concern here, or the, what, what they're asking for. So in scenarios like, for instance, that particular, okay, so in scenarios like this one right here, if you imagine this, I'm, I'm pointing to the bottom right.
Thank you for telling us. I'm, I'm ready to buy the city a new pointer because we struggle with this every week.
So if, imagine for a second, if the panels were not here and the gas line and all that were not here. So what the, what the planning commission is requiring is for us to extend this veneer or siding all the way back to the, to the location of, of any kind of fencing that would go, or any kind of other natural design feature. We don't typically do that. We usually go back about two feet. One is, a lot of times there's a lot of landscaping back here. Visibility is just limited on what you can see in terms of the siding going back. And so where we, and, and then the other item is, these walls, a lot of times, they are, they're built after the homes are built. So the location of the walls, a lot of times, is determined by either the panels or just kind of the, the visual characteristics for us to be able to produce indentations and, and not have walls to be right next to each other. So what ends up happening is if we don't know, we don't know a lot of times where the wall goes when we're putting in the veneers and the siding in. So by kind of having this arbitrary requirement to go all the way back to the, to the, to the, to the gate here, it, it makes it really difficult to kind of build these in the time and in the sequence that we would like to build them. And what I wanted to propose was if we could actually give it a linear footage as a maximum. So the language that's currently being proposed is-
That's not the language, though.
No, I understand. I'm, I'm proposing that we add to it. The, the language is currently being proposed right here. Right here. Revise the elevation so the siding such as stone veneer wraps and continues around the front and side portions of the structure. It's, it's essentially kind of vague on how much we would want to go in. So if we could put a linear footage on it, a lot of times when we have things like panels or, or, or like the, the electric panels-
You don't want that stuff there anyway.
We would not put it there. But if we don't have it, we want to know how far the maximum is we need to be going in. And right now, we typically go in about two feet and stop.
How many?
We usually go in about two feet and stop. Yeah. And so if the, if the city council wants us to go in further, I would like for us to add a number to it, four feet, five feet. And just so we know kind of what the subcontractors in the field needs to do and not have to wait for somebody to come in and put the wall, for them to be able to come back and kind of continue on that. Just because, that's just not, a lot of times, the sequence of how we built these. And so that condition adds a level of uncertainty to-
That makes sense.
For us to be able to build it.
We'll clarify that if you'll throw grass in the backyard.
Yeah, I was going to say, probably the most expense in that is the sprinklers.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to comment to add to your comment earlier that, that the conditions are on page thirteen and fourteen of your packet of the conditions of approval. And I do believe that Planning Commission wrote them generic enough, or at least commented generic enough to work with staff, to staff, like kind of to what you were saying.
More suggestive.
Yeah, more suggestive to begin with. So just removing, removing any of them altogether, that wouldn't be my recommendation because I think that they're suggestive enough for staff to be able to work with the applicant when it comes to the trees or the structure or even the elevations. And in terms of the, the number three that he was talking about, if, if you were to read, it does say that there shall be an appropriate designated point of termination, such as a backyard fence, a buttress wall, or the utility boxes, if any. If there is no buttress wall or visible termination point, then use foam trim or similar method for formal termination of the siding. So staff did attempt to have a formal termination of the extended siding.
Are you good with that language?
Well, the concern is, it says if there is no natural termination. And the natural termination could always be the vinyl gate. So if that's what the ultimate natural termination is, then that would always be the, kind of the final determinant. So if we were to come in and say, we want it to be, we want to put in a foam line at about five feet in, the, that condition could, the way I'm understanding it, force us to, force us to actually have to go all the way back to where the vinyl would be.
So this is my comment on, on this. And I've said this before, I, I'm very, very uncomfortable getting into these design types of requirements because you as a developer, like, like, I mean, we're not knocking the quality of, of the work because we think very highly of Lennar. We think that is a great development. Speaking, I think I'm speaking for everybody. That is a great development. We've had plenty of other developers come through this town that we have not been happy with. And I won't publicly say, but we, plenty that we have not been happy with. So you guys have been phenomenal for the years we've been involved with you. But I'm uncomfortable because this is your business, you know what sells homes. We had this conversation, we talked about the gates six months ago. You know what sells. And I, I, and I totally agree. I'm, I'm supporting the fact that we wanted a bunch of custom homes over there. However, you know what will sell and what people will buy and where that price point is and how to do it. That's what makes you successful. So I'm a little uncomfortable getting into, you should do this, you should alter your business practice here or whatever to sell a house. Now, when we're talking about the, the, the public amenities and the, the front-facing stuff in the community, I, that's absolutely appropriate. And I think we've talked mostly about that stuff. But that one, I'm just struggling a little bit with because I don't know how to put that mandate on you. And I, you made perfect sense when you said walls and fences come in last. So how do we know where that's going to end up? I get it. That, that I get. But, so I don't know. I don't know what our consensus is here and how do we deal with number three? I'm, I'm open to some suggestions. I just don't want to make it overly complicated because they know what'll sell a house. Number two, could we word it something like, ensure that there's shade and/or structure that, that protects or highlights the mailbox clusters or something like that? Some type of agreement we can come to on that. I think we, I think it was made pretty clear here that several on the council don't think that fast-growing trees are the answer. And I think even the city manager doesn't think that's the answer. So I'm comfortable not even approaching number one. But Lorena, what do you think?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm comfortable with your decision. Originally, I was saying that I, I think that we wrote it enough to work with city staff. So if, if it doesn't work out, city staff will make that determination that this isn't the appropriate tree. But right now is the opportunity to either get rid of it or change it.
So based on the language that's there for one, are you guys okay with the language that's there for one? We have to go back and actually, yeah, the way the city staff wrote it. What page is that?
Page thirteen. So the way it reads, and I, I'll read it out loud. Prior to submitting the final landscaping plans during the plan check process, the applicant shall work with city staff and revise the plans to indicate additional and alternative types of trees throughout the development. More specifically, A, provide a minimum of two types of fast-growing trees that will produce substantial shade along the Zongha Trail, public park areas, perimeter and parkways.
What page are you, what page are you on?
Page thirteen of the conditions of approval.
I would, I would go for that except strike the words "fast-growing." So it says two types of trees. Is that a minimal to everybody? Cause I, I think, I think our concern was that. So that, that still says work with staff, but it takes out "fast-growing" so we can, you guys can determine what's appropriate.
Yeah, I, I would support that because what you don't want is trees that have spindly little leaves and there will never be shade, not in a hundred years. You want something that will provide shade eventually, but you just don't, you're not impatient about it enough to get really sloppy trees in there as a result.
So I think one of the questions I asked earlier was like, are the trees going to be in front of the houses? This says, public park areas, Zongha Trail, perimeter and-
So is it two trees per house? We'll have trees in the parkway.
So it's not going to be in front of the house?
No, they, they-
No, that's, that's correct, Jindal. It's, it's almost like two different areas that we're looking at. So this, this condition was focusing specifically like in the public areas, also the perimeters, the parkways and the Zongha Trail. Commissioner Jay Nelson was worried that there wouldn't be enough substantial shade or trees in the Zongha Trails as people are doing their exercise. So that's how the whole topic got brought up.
So how do I know what the front of the house is going to look like?
No matter what, in front of the house, there will be two trees minimum. The tree, one tree will be in the front yard and one tree will be in the parkway. That is required per the code.
So there's going to be fifty trees in front of the houses and then fifty trees on the Zongha Trail, park, wherever?
No.
There's fifty-one houses, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but she's talking about in, like, the, the parkway is the, the area that, on the other side of the sidewalk, between the street and the sidewalk.
Yeah, so right here, I think what we're talking about right now is the, the trees that would be in this area as well as this area and this area right here. If you just, if you look at the landscaping plan that we have provided, we're already providing a variety of trees, including maintaining, preserving some of the trees that are here within the Zongha Trail. So we're right within this trail, we will have a variety of tree types. And then these trees are different than these trees. And they would, they could be similar to these, but at this point, we're already providing at least two or three different kind of trees. And then if you look at this sheet right here, you were asking on what the front of the home would look like. You would have a tree typically in the front yard and then you would have one in the parkway. So this would cover the two trees in front of every home.
Got it. So each house is going to have two trees and then we're going to have however many in the Zongha Trail and accessories.
That's correct.
The additional trees.
Okay, so do we have a consensus here to strike that word? I already crossed it out. I remember what it was.
Fast, fast-growing?
For item number, for A, or item number one, A. On Mission Road, choose the same types of trees and plant pallet to match the street medium strip and parkways found at the residential development across the road. I, I think that sounds good. So one nineteen is the second question. During the plan check process, the applicant will work with city staff to find and install an appropriate shade structure with lighting, work with city staff to install appropriate shade. Should we take the word "structure" out?
Talk.
On page fourteen now.
Mayor, I, that, I struggle with the, with that language myself. That's kind of what triggered the concern on my end because-
The word "structure."
The shade structure. It doesn't, we are okay with, with making sure or doing our best to provide natural shading.
Yeah.
But in terms of providing a shade structure, we kind of have that concern with providing that.
Well, we don't even know where it's going to go yet.
Right. And that's kind of, we, and we can make an effort to work with the city staff and engage USPS early on.
So, so let's see. During the plan check process, the applicant shall work with city staff to find and install, I'm going to say, take out the "and" and take out "structure."
Just shade is all you need.
Yeah, so install appropriate shade. Yeah. Oh, yeah, or just shade.
Provide.
To find and install appropriate shade with lighting for the mailbox clusters. Place the boxes near shade trees and street lighting, provide detail, blah, blah, blah. So I took out the word "and" and took out the word "structure."
Mr. Mayor, how about instead of find and install, just provide appropriate shade structures?
Yeah.
Just appropriate shade.
Yeah, provide shade.
Shade and take out "structure"?
Yeah, take out "structure."
I mean, I see that as a, personally, I see that as kind of a throwaway issue. It doesn't take me long to go open my mailbox and get my mail and head back to the house that's air-conditioned or heated. So I, I, I don't even see the use of that, but I'm not opposed to it.
So to confirm one more time, to provide appropriate shade and lighting for the mailbox clusters?
Perfect.
Okay.
And the last sentence has the word "structure" in it too, so we probably need to-
Place the boxes near shade tree, shade trees and street lighting, provide, provide a detail.
Just eliminate.
Okay, remove that.
No, provide a detail of the shade.
I, I think just strike that whole last sentence.
Yeah, take the "the," yeah, I agree.
I don't get the point of shade because the sun comes from many different angles during the day. And I also, I think a more appropriate thing, but it would be ridiculous, would be to say, provide enough room to swing an umbrella while you're getting your mail.
So I'm, I'm, I am striking out the last two sentences.
So we, we're, we're losing council folks because we got other engagements, so we got to get rolling with this.
Okay, I, I, I get it.
So throw a tree up somewhere around where the mailboxes are. I mean, that's what it comes down to. It's, I don't see that as any good. I, I do, I do have a bigger issue with dirt backyards. That's cheap. And we, this, the original plan behind this was custom homes. Custom homes, you don't build with a dirt backyard with no kind of even cement pad. And I just find that cheesy. Increase the house price five thousand dollars and put a backyard in so it looks decent.
Actually, a custom home means no yard. That means everybody does their own custom yard.
This is back to your definition of liberal. So we're looking for middle of the road here.
So custom, a truly custom home is just a lot. And they hire a contractor. They hire their own architect and everything.
Can we go back to one of those overviews with the lots again? Preferably the one with not, without the houses. There you go. So when we're talking about, and I know, at this point, I don't think any of us have any control over this because it sounds like the post office has got to get involved in it. But if I was looking at it and I put my, my professional hat on from my day job, I would look to put those mailboxes somewhere that's super inconvenient for crooks to drive by and break into them. I would actually probably put one in the cul-de-sac on the inside. Well, they're brazen, but that's pretty deep into the neighborhood. You're right. There's no consequence. I know, that's a whole other discussion. But to get in and out, it, it would be so complicated for them to run. I just think it would, right there at that little walk-acrossway on the inside of the cul-de-sac, right there. I would put one right there. That catches all those homes on the inside. And then the outside one, I, you know, I don't know. But that one, but that's me. But it sounds like we can't even, we shouldn't even be talking about this because we don't know. But that's a thought. I wanted to throw that out there. It's been in my head since we were talking about it a little while ago. Okay, moving on to the last item.
You're ignoring my protest.
I'm not. I'm trying to get through the three items and then we can go back to the dirt.
Oh, okay.
So during the plan check process, the applicant will work with city staff and revise the elevation so the siding such as stone veneer wraps, stone veneer wraps and continues, oh, so stone veneer wraps and continues like a verb, around the front and side portions of the structure. There should be an appropriate designated point of termination, such as a backyard fence, buttress. I don't know, what's, what's the, what's our, what's our-
I don't know, what's, what's the, what's our, what's our middle ground on this one?
What's your, your number?
I'd hate to even say put in two feet or three feet, because it'll look, it could look dumb.
We, we, I mean, quite frankly, I would, I would side probably with your initial statement of kind of letting us work with the, uh, with the team on if this design is appropriate and acceptable, why mess with it, kind of thing. It's difficult to kind of comply with, with rules like that, because it, it just, it just creates a level of ambiguity that, that makes it difficult to, to do the design work. If you, if you want to give us a linear footage for, okay, going this many feet, you can go with that, but at this point, I mean, typically, these kind of designs, we go in at about two feet. Correct me if I'm wrong on this. And we don't have any issues with that. And it, it looks pretty, it, it looks pretty wrapped. And a lot of times, you know, when they, homeowners, they put, based on kind of what they do on the sides, whether it's landscaping or anything else, the visibility is limited anyways. So, the more, the more siding you have on there, it becomes, down the road, it's also an additional maintenance cost for the homeowners. But, I mean...
Yeah, I, I'm okay eliminating that portion, because I just don't, I don't, I, I think you know, the market dictates. What I really want, and I think probably most of us do, is that you start building these houses tomorrow. So, whatever will accelerate that, market be damned. Because there are other things that we consider in terms of that land and that property. You know, we're gonna go through another summer of tumbleweeds and dust and all kinds of nonsense, because that's barren out there. So, in, in my, maybe this is now my, my opinion, the sooner we get buildings up, the, the better it is, but... Yeah, I, I'm in favor of staying away from number three, but that's just my spot. Anybody have any position on it?
I agree with the mayor.
Yeah, good. Okay. All right. I think we're gonna, we're gonna take out number three. Okay, so, back to the backyards, because I know that, that's important to you. So, what, what are, what, what can we possibly look at for that?
Is that a question for me?
I guess, yeah.
What do you estimate these houses, just ballpark? Five hundred, six hundred thousand?
I don't know.
Four hundred, eight hundred?
It depends on market conditions.
Yeah, no, I, 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 nobody's gonna hold you to it, but I mean, just give me a range of what you're thinking.
It's, it's, right now, I mean, we're not looking, there, we were looking at probably putting them on the market for over six hundred, seven hundred, about seven, six, seven, somewhere in there.
So, add five thousand to it and throw a backyard in.
So...
It'll, it'll increase the value more than five thousand dollars.
Well, to be honest with you, putting the, the items that, even, even the minimum items that you're requesting would be more than five thousand dollars for the homeowners, to add those. Um, on, and I'm just speaking from another community that we have in a neighboring city, where we're offering that kind of a package in the rear yard. And this is, again, just because of market conditions, on a much smaller rear yard, these are large lots. You're talking about minimum ten thousand square foot lot.
Minimum, it's ten thousand, they're large lots.
It's, the, just the cost of putting things on lots that are much smaller than these are no less than fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars, to just put very minimum landscaping in the back. Now, if that's something that you would like for us to work with the city staff on, to provide them with some kind of a preliminary item or layout for them to consider, for the homeowners to select down the road, we're willing to entertain that, but it's really not part of our protocol. It's not something that we offer, and it's not something that's selected a lot of times. But, I, you know, at this point, you guys can condition us for, for this track for whatever you wish, but, and if, if that's something that you want us, the direction you want us to go, we'll work with the city staff on it. But, in our experience, where we're offering them a lot of times to homeowners, if they want something to just be in there, they'll pick it, but a lot of times, they're not even picking it when we're offering it to them. Just because they wanna do something down the road themselves or something else. So, it's, it's really your call.
I wish I could, maybe I need to do that, take a helicopter ride over your other, your other side over there, because I, when I drive through, I see a lot of people doing a lot of work, I'm assuming on backyard stuff, I see...
Yeah, are, are, are the other Lennar homes back there bare backyards?
Well, they were sold that way, I'm assuming, but I've seen a lot of people, when I was out walking the district in the last election, I, I, I mean, every other house had sod or brick or something piled up in the front yard that was being taken to the back. So, I know a lot of those lots were developed. I just don't know what it looks like from over, overhead.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the semi, that's probably the only semi-custom part of these lots, is you can do whatever you want with your backyard, from dirt to, from soup to nuts.
Yeah.
But, I, I do know, I can, I can vouch for the price of minimal landscaping. It is shockingly expensive. First sprinkler systems, grass, bushes.
One of my neighbors is a general contractor. He says they bring a team in, because he does developments in San Diego, all around Inland Empire. And he says they bring a team in and they've got their diggers and they dig the trenches and lay the pipe in, but they, all of it for multiple yards in a day.
Well, it's just, it, it's, you, you end up with a crew of ten, fifteen, twenty people out there and...
It's the labor is what's gonna cost.
And, and, and one other thing...
If you're talking about a six hundred thousand dollar house, or a seven hundred thousand dollar house, but, hey, I'm, I'm still, I have not fully let go of the fact that this was reserved to be a custom home development. We're a long ways from that now. Uh, this is a, a upgraded... Well, yeah, no, I understand. I mean, I can get voted down, but to buy a nice home with a big dirt backyard, some people are gonna put a pool in there, I recognize that. But, anyway, I stand by my perspective. And everybody can build the way they choose to. I think, I think it enhances the neighborhood if, if there's some green grass. And then, if people wanna dig it up and put a pool in or put some exotic, exotic patio structure in or something, then that's fine. If they've got the resources to do that. Most people don't. Most people don't. Not in the beginning. We didn't. Took us years before we developed our backyard, but we at least had grass.
Let's do a straw poll here on the dais and see if that's an issue we wanna attach at this point. I hate to do it that way. I agree with you, but otherwise, we're not gonna be able to move forward.
You know I hate grass, though.
Okay. I, I had a feeling that we were gonna be looking at the water conservation issue, so... So, I think we're good. So, no fourth amendment. So, I think we've got the three amendments. That's where we stand at this point. We do have to open the public hearing, so we're gonna do that. I'm gonna ask Julie if she still wants to come up and talk.
I've got a big white name, stay by as well.
Okay.
My name is Julie Stalker. I have comments and questions, I guess. My concern is an existing home on Mission Road. The home that is ours is right next to the Adobe, the first one next to the Adobe. So, when I'm addressing all these issues, that's where I'm talking about. I went through and read your thing today. And it talked about the center medium on Mission Road. I would like to go on record saying I never want a center medium in front of my house on Mission Road. And down here, the waived thing is put in there. You know, it says that the existing residences will have no center medium installed in front of their house, which is me, but this requirement may be waived. On record, I never want a center medium in front of my house, okay? That's one thing, okay? Um, let me move on from there. The notice of pub, the, the public notices that you guys sent out, apparently, I don't get them. They don't come to our house. So, I don't know, you said nobody had comments about the public notices that were sent out? Maybe they didn't get them either, because I did not.
Your neighbor did, your neighbor...
Came to the meetings.
Well, that's fine with them, but not with me. I didn't get them. You email me some of the stuff, but not the public notices. I've got the public notices in the past that are to my parents' trust, which is the name on the property, and that stuff does not come to me. That stuff only comes to their house. And I'm assuming that's the public notices that you're talking about.
Are you within three hundred feet of the project site?
Oh, yeah, she's right next to it.
I'm the house next to the Adobe. Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying...
Does it go to the record at the assessor's office? So, that would be whoever, you said a trust, so it's, it's going to another...
I have seen some of these in the past, but not recently. So, they come to the address on the house in my parents' trust name. But, recently, I have not seen them, so I have not received them.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Next question.
Are you executor of the trust?
I am.
Okay, then, okay.
Okay, next question. In this pamphlet also, it talks about sidewalks in front of the, in front of the new houses on Mission Road. How is that going to affect us?
I talked to your mom before. So, if you want to have the street improvement and the sidewalk improvement in front of your house, the city will be happy to put them in. But, you have to dedicate a right-of-way to us. If, if the, the three property owner dedicate a right-of-way to the city, the city will extend the curb and gutter, connect the two, and put a sidewalk and do a street improvement.
You already have an easement out in front.
No, ma'am, you need...
Yes, you do.
Okay, then, then, but the last time, the last time when we did the project across the street, both your mom and dad said no to the sidewalk. So, if, if you want to give us an approval, we'd be happy to, to do that. I would talk to the engineer who designed this street improvement. The city will pay as a separate, not, not the Lennar, to do design and do the improvement, because I, I do want to connect the two.
And if, and if we say no, then the sidewalk goes to in front of the Adobe? And it misses the next three houses, then it continues?
Correct. That's why the city, that's why I wanted so bad to get the permission from the three property owner, so the city can finish this off. Yes, I, I, I really want to do it. Because what happened is, if you don't do that, the rain will, after the rainfall, it will flow in the gutter and then stop, because there's no, no place to continue. And will flow into the dirt in front of your house. So, the ideal...
If you've been by there recently, we just cleaned all that up.
That's, that's why I want to extend curb and gutter across all three properties and finish it off, and have a nice Mission Road on both sides all the way through the development.
Okay, continuing on the sidewalk issue. Now that we're getting these big houses like you guys are talking about here, where is the parking gonna be here? Because like you said, if you're gonna get a seven-bedroom house, or whatever it is, on Mission Road here, and there's not enough room in the driveway or in the garage to park the Suburbans and the trucks and stuff, where is the parking gonna be?
That's, that's why all of this will have a wider right-of-way. That's why we need right-of-way dedication. If you notice it, the, uh, the improvement that they done to the east, the existing one that they completed on phase one, Mission Road is wider to the north side. And I conditioned them the same way all the way across. That's why I need additional right-of-way dedication from the three parcel, existing parcel, so I could do that.
So...
The street will be wider, so you can park.
Just because you're familiar from where I'm talking about you, so you'd be taking my wall out?
I, I don't want to, but, but the whole idea is I want to stay within front of your wall. I don't wanna tear your wall down. What it is, is I'm gonna extend the, uh, the curb and gutter on the east side all the way to the west side of development that's existing.
Would it be a smart thing to take the, excuse me, would it be a smart thing to take the medium out right there? Because that way...
There's no medium in front of your house.
There's no medium in front of my house, but there's medium in front of the new houses. Would it be wise to take that out, to have more parking on the street? Otherwise, you're not gonna have enough parking on the street.
The reason, the reason we put the median on Mission Road is to slow down the traffic. And that was your parents' concern from very beginning.
Correct.
To slow down the traffic, and that's why we put in the, uh, the median on the west side of your house.
And actually, closing off Mission Road has slowed down the traffic a little bit.
It has, but it's still, there's still some people that speed down there.
Oh, boy, is there.
And that, that's why there's that little jog further west. And some of those other things were designed to try to slow the traffic down a little bit.
Our mailboxes got taken out about four times.
Yeah. Yeah, that, hopefully, hopefully, cul-de-sac in that will, hopefully, we'll see even more improvement, but yeah.
Okay, just because we're talking about this, over the years, have you guys changed the zoning there for us, or are we still in the same zoning that we were before?
I believe so. I have to look at a zoning map. Are, are you within special planning area? Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, no, that's, sorry.
It's always...
Yes, it's still, it's still planned community.
Can you get back to me on that, or what, what, what our zone is? Can you do that for me?
Real quick, it is part of the specific plan, so that's very low density. You're within planning area three-six, which is very low density, minimum ten thousand square foot lots.
But, we are already there. We're existing.
Yeah.
Yes, but the zoning is still inconsistent with the specific plan. It is now planned community.
So, you've changed it over the years? That's what I, that's all I'm asking. Has it been changed over the years?
It used to be agriculture, it used to be orange trees.
I know it did.
Right. So, now we changed from, from orange tree to a single family.
Redlands. We didn't used to be Loma Linda. I get it. You know?
It used to be architectures to now residential.
And there's no, no extra charge for moving up from Redlands to Loma Linda?
Right, or from county to Redlands to Loma Linda, however we went. Um, I agree with what you're saying. Back in the day when this was put in, it was going to be low-density custom homes, ranch-style custom homes. That's what it was talked about way back when. Um, next question. On this map here, the houses that are facing our three properties there, are they two-story or one-story?
Uh, they aren't facing, they won't be facing your property. They're facing north.
No, no, no. The houses behind us...
They face the other way.
Okay, so, so, to confirm the oranges, to confirm the oranges, single story and the other ones are two-story.
Okay. Gotcha. Last question, when it comes to the drainage. In here, it talked about drainage, and it talked about Lamar taking care of the drainage on, for the new homes, but the existing property people were in charge of their own drainage. How does that affect us? And what is the elevation going to be of these homes?
Yes.
Is it gonna be high? Is it gonna be lower than what we are? What is it?
The, the current drainage pattern is go south, I mean northeast, northwest, I'm sorry, direction, which is going that direction.
Gotcha.
Okay? And then, the storm rain, there's always, this storm rain is part of this improvement, so there'll be a catch basin at the corner of the street, so that, that, the, the rainfall within this subdivision will stay within this subdivision. There will be no runoff to go to Mission Road.
What if there is? Who's responsible for that?
Well, that's why I want, even on Mission Road, that's why I prefer to put in curb and gutter to drain the water.
No, hold on. If there's no curb and gutters on Mission Road, and because of this housing tract causes us on Mission Road, our three houses there, a drainage problem, whose responsibility is it?
Well, the flow wouldn't go that direction. It would go north.
Right.
The, the, the...
Crazy stuff happens here, you know?
The lot is, the lot is grading toward the street.
You can say that, you know, and I think I will be okay. I'm, I'm a little higher, it seems like, but next door to me, they're low. And I know, we talked about this earlier. So, the drainage, just correct me here, like we have this flood of sixty-nine. I don't know, right? Anything can happen here. Come on.
Yes, yes, yes.
You know? The whole street was flooded back then. So, whose responsibility is it if that happens?
I think the question is, to what flood level did we design the drainage? Was it, is it a hundred-year flood, or a five-hundred-year flood, or a thousand-year flood?
Well, I, I can answer that. If, if a ten-year flood, it would stay within the curb. If a hundred-year flood, it stay within the path. But, after that, it can flood anywhere. And the sixty-nine flood is, was not even a hundred-year storm, it's more than that.
No, it was, it was bad, yeah, you know?
Yes, so, so, the city have certain limit.
But, we also have the hundred, the sixty-nine... But we also have the hundred, the sixty-nine storm was, the biggest problem was the creek coming down and that has been mitigated by the Army Corps of Engineers. So your required flood insurance is no longer there, the requirement. So that, it shouldn't be as bad as it was in sixty-nine ever again. But, you know.
You understand my, my question.
God put up a rainbow to keep you safe.
Um, I think those are basically my questions. I guess if we can address any of.
And I'm glad you, you brought this up because I will contact you regarding the street improvement because I talked to the, your neighbor, the two property owner, that I, I was, the city is willing to do the street improvement in front of us through, through existing properties.
Let me throw this out there. Well, the problem, well, here's the problem. The problem is we're reliant on the developer to finish the other two sides. So if they don't start this project because. Right, that's. Right, that's, that's the, that's the thing that kind of is the bummer here is you may think, hey, man, this is a great opportunity and your neighbors think it's a great opportunity, but now we're reliant on them to get the project started.
And it's the same thing with moving the poles and everything else that's out there too. You know, I mean, I know there's a lot that goes into this. And until the whole development or whichever development is going to be done here, that kind of all needs to kind of work together. I get that. I'm just trying to do the best to protect what I have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just one last question. Can any of you guys think of anything else that I'm kind of missing that affects my property here?
Well, I, I, I mean, back to the, to the drainage piece. I think, I think the conservancy and, and the folks connected to the adobe would be most worried about the drainage there too because that would, that would just take out the whole thing.
Correct.
Uh, we gotta make sure this is done correctly because that's, that's also an important piece to protect.
And the fact that all this is changing, you know, I mean, we've been fine for years, you know, but now all of this behind us is changing.
Yeah. I, I personally think it's going to improve in terms of like the dirt and dust and wind blow and the tumbleweeds. And last year at this time, there were what? Two million tumbleweeds on Mission Road jarbs that you guys had to clean up? Um, the sooner.
Yeah, oh, at least two million.
The sooner this stuff gets put in, I think the cleaner it's gonna be for a lot of us.
What's so nice about this project is they put in a storm rain system. So that will, storm rain system that will help with the drains a lot, so.
Okay, I think that's all I got.
All right, cool. Good questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dangerman.
Your, your three minutes are up.
We can imagine if we were one of those cities that held people to that, we'd have been gone an hour and a half ago.
I like what you were just discussing and the idea of doing improvements across the, the front there would be most welcome. That, um, Mr. Frank and I were talking about that just before the meeting, trying to figure out how, how to do that and to coordinate the driveways that we want to do in the front. And so that would be super. The only thing that I wanted to comment on was the lot C, which is behind the adobe, that widened-out area. We're very much wanting to coordinate that with the improvements around the adobe and the adobe itself. Cause that's where the historic citrus are and, and so what we're hoping is that the original plan called for the fence to go right behind the adobe on the property line, which is just five foot up behind the house. And it would separate it. And so instead of doing that, we'd like it to go around and protect the citrus area. That there's a desire to have a walkway go through the, uh, following or being close to the zonha. And we can coordinate that where there's areas where there's some of the trees and, and that are too close to it. But what the language that the staff has written is that we would coordinate that with staff and Lennar and come up with a more precise plan for that area. We recently were out, was it last week or week before last, in precisely measuring where all those trees are so that we can better coordinate that. And there's some, a lot of dead tree debris in that area and as well as some old broken-up concrete. And we want to get that removed and cleaned up as well. So other than that, we're anxious and ready to get in there and start doing stuff. So I don't know whether there's a way that High Point could convey the parcel ahead of time so that we can get started. But we're, if the city is willing to support that, we would ask them to be able to do that, so.
I, I went out with him a couple of time out of field. And, and as, as, as long as, because they all, they all approve parcel map, a track map.
Yeah.
Which is have all, all the line is already been drawn. So if the, the thing that he talked about is only the landscaping part and the trees part, we can work with him. But as far as when they're gonna, first of all, Lennar have to purchase, have you purchased the project from High Point yet? No. So, so this is the complication.
So when is that? I mean, you're hearing multiple people say, we'd like to see this happen soon. And I know there's a transaction between Lennart and High Point. What's your best estimate on, on the future of that?
Yeah, so, um.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, yeah, the, the August date that I gave for starting to grade, it assumes that we would have closed prior to that. The August of twenty twenty-three, so that would assume that we would close prior to that. I generally, we don't start on the track until we own it. So that doesn't necessarily mean that we would close in August of next year. Um, it could be sooner, but at this point, it would most likely be, it would most likely, you know, at the latest, at this point, we're looking, it wouldn't be until June for closing.
June of next year?
Yeah.
You said, oh, no. City manager, what, what, what's your take on what he just described?
Again, he just say, right now, the, the whole project is still belong to High Point.
High Point.
And, and Lennar not gonna buy it until the market's ready to be, to, to have the project completed and, and house can sell. So more likely, August date probably more likely for them to start or, or close the sale than, than June.
Yeah, I mean, we have already invested significant amount of resources to get us to where we are at this point. So we would like to see this get built and get started. And we would have ideally had this started already right now. Um, the original schedule assumed that we would start grading in this quarter. A few months ago. Uh, but just because of market conditions and things that have happened, things have pushed out.
So what, what's, what's the motivator for High Point to move this along?
They, they are. They want to sell the project. They want to hold this. The longer they hold the project.
They're motivated to sell it to us. They are. It's just we, at this point, can't, can't start it. The, just the, we at this point can't, yeah, buy it or start on it until next year.
So you're waiting for more favorable market conditions, which if I'm understanding you means lower interest rates and more demand for the product.
More desperation for High Point to offload it.
Well, I would, I would say it's a variety of items, right? It would be lower costs, maybe lower interest rates, whatever, kind of the, the adjustments that are needed to make, to make it viable or more viable.
Wizardry.
Yeah. Okay. No, I understand. I mean, you're in the business. You gotta make money on the project. I get that. I don't, you know, I just want a little grass thrown in.
Okay, we've gotten to move this along.
One last, and I hesitate to step into it, but having been born and raised in the nursery business and a landscape architect and, uh, one thing I've learned is that there is something wrong with every tree there is. There's always some bad thing. It either drops too many leaves or it, uh, it, there is no perfect tree. So you then need to go for the attributes that you want.
No, no, no. On the Charlie Brown, on the Charlie Brown special, they had a metal one.
I, I agree entirely. There's no perfect tree. And if you like beauty, you get jacaranda flowers everywhere.
All right, so we gotta move this forward, but I do have one, one more comment. And this is from Mr. Frank in the audience. I don't know if you saw the proposed name of the, of the furthest west street right there. It's gonna be named Frank Ranch Road. So I thought that was pretty cool. Oh, and we still have Dick on the phone. Dick, are you still there? We still have one more public comment on the.
Dick, I requested to.
No, Dick Wiley's on Zoom. Yes, sir. Dick, are you there?
I'm sorry?
Okay, go, go ahead. We gotta, we gotta move this quickly, though.
Okay, uh, the comments that you've been asking about on mailboxes. I think I was the one that brought that up there. Intent was that with this heat that we had this last summer, the mail people deliver the mail in the sun. They work out in it. And there was a program saying that a lot of these people are dying from heat stroke because of, well, they don't have air conditioning, so they're, they're carrier cars. And so, and talked to one of the mail people, I said, what happens if we put a, a tree to shade it? You know, in other words, this has to be looked at from the direction of the sun. You say, when you're unloading the mail, you've got some shade. Uh, that was the intent of adding. Now, you could move the mailboxes to where the trees are. So I, I did give, uh, to High Point, the mailboxes, we had new ones because they were creating into ours. We had intent just recently on the new ones. They didn't get into it. And so they've got the name of the good one, but these things, as I say, you turn around and put the boxes so that they're to shade during the time of the day that the delivery was being made. The post office is where it is. I talked to the postmaster the other day. And he's gonna contact the, the renter and talk with her about that. He said, maybe if they do a three, they could become a city ordinance as to how the mailboxes would be placed. The other comment would be when the roof, weather is looking right now, like we might have a wet weather. And I don't know. We need to check that roof on the adobe. There was plastic on there. And of course, over time, the sun's eaten that up and it's blown off there. But we had to put the plastic back on there temporarily or whether something is gonna be put for a little bit longer period of time. So the department will come on. And I say what the department will apply. So I appreciate that and that comment, hopefully before, uh, you get through tonight. You'll get rid of that opportunity where you guys make a comment at the end of the segment. I had to hand it up for the open session, but I didn't get it to all.
Okay. I think, I think it's probably, I think I know what it's about. It's about the email we had the other day, right?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right. Well, we'll get to that when we get to. No, I really like to get this thing closed in case anybody else has to leave. So we'll, we'll get to new business and we'll, we'll get to you. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. So we're gonna, uh, close the, the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah. I move all of the above.
Does that include the?
The three amendments as.
It includes the.
Two, two amendments, cause we killed one, yes.
One and two or A and B.
It includes the sum total of our prior discussion.
Okay, no, we don't have a second yet.
And comment, the post office includes heat in their motto. Neither snow nor rain nor heat nor gloom of night.
I, I personally would like this to come back afterward when staff can report to us on what their recommendations are regarding trees, grass, landscaping, sidewalks for Mission. I think so. I mean, if, I don't know what the push is. Because what I'm hearing is the probability that this transaction is gonna be completed within the next few months is not very high. So I don't know why we're gonna push. I, I'm not in favor of pushing this through with uncertainty. I think we've all expressed our support for the project. We've expressed our support and appreciation for the quality of work Lennart Homes has done. But from my point of view, there are still some details that I'd like to have dialed in. And, you know, if bulldozers were coming in on January ten, that'd be one thing, but that's not what we're looking at. So I'd like to get a few more details sorted out to my satisfaction.
My argument in favor of the motion is that a lot of these details, I trust the staff to take care of. And it's not really the kind of stuff that I think needs to percolate this, you know, up to the diocese. I think it can stay with the staff, but that's just why I'm proceeding with the motion.
I agree, and that.
And ordn, under ordinary circumstances, I would agree, but we've got some junky trees and dirt lots.
But we've also got excellent. We've also got excellent staff. They have good taste.
Yeah, and I think we determined that those items will be brought back to them.
I think they represent our views pretty well and they know how we feel about it.
Yeah, what, what am I gonna say about that? Of course, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I set you up.
Okay.
You did.
Mr. Gendal, are you interested in a second?
May I let Dr. Daly in a second if you'd like?
He's not gonna do a second.
All right, so I, I usually, Dr. Daly is usually the one that does know, but I'm gonna support him on this one.
Okay, so it looks like we're not gonna get a vote tonight, so I'm gonna move this to our next council meeting. Which will be, I assume.
Yeah, we can request some definition from the staff regarding some of the issues we've talked about.
I don't think any of that's appropriate, cause I think we already addressed those.
No, not by next meeting because the landscape architect have to design the, the landscape for the trees and pick the trees and then we review it, so.
And if anything, that will further delay the purchase.
The purchase. That's my concern is we're messing with the purchase.
If it's gonna delay.
It will not speed it up.
If this kind of size of a project is delayed because of the trees, then we got a lot bigger trouble.
It's already hanging on the edge because of market conditions.
Yeah, I would.
And just putting more administrative.
Stress on it?
Yep.
I agree.
It will, if anything.
I disagree.
It's, it's a conditional statement. If anything, it will slow it down.
Is there any type of contingency that we can do? So I, I understand the part we want brought back. Can we just have that prob, that part brought back and?
I think it was already stated earlier that that part is automatically brought back. That landscaping is a condition of approval that comes later in the process. Lorena already gave us that information. So that is something that's already in the plan. We'll come back later and those things will be addressed then. I don't think it's appropriate for us to discuss it here in this particular, um, hearing.
And to confirm, Mr. Mayor, it gets brought back to plan check, not back to council?
Right.
Okay.
But we talked about how you would address those issues in the plan check process.
So here's my hesitation. Dr. Daly mentioned about the trees and floor in general. Mine is, I, I just, it's a gut feeling. I feel like we can have a better job with the houses themselves. And I might be the only one that thinks that and that's not gonna change next time around. But it's the hesitation I have, so I think we have two people hesitating over here.
Fair enough. We'll bring it back in January and maybe we'll, I'm sure we'll have the votes then we can move it.
I need, okay, so, so you don't like the design for the house? Is that what your concern is? Cause it's no point of bringing it back in January when, when you have given us.
January will bring a fifth vote.
Yeah, Dr. Lennart will be here and we'll move it forward.
That's what January brings.
He would have voted for it had he been here.
You think? You think. You're not sure.
I'm not sure, but.
But it is a fifth vote. That's, and that's the only difference in January. That's the only difference I see. Nothing else will change because it's, it's the holidays. Even our excellent staff celebrate holidays. because it's, it's the holidays. Even our excellent staff celebrate holidays.
So, should we just continue it?
That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, that's what I think.
We have avoid re-noticing and all this.
Okay.
Okay, then, then I move that we continue it to a date certain, the January meeting.
Okay. We're still going to discuss our schedule, so I didn't want to throw out a date until we got, but-
Well, but we have, we have a scheduled meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Does that require a vote?
Okay, so we have a motion. Do you have a second on that? If not, we're going to be here all night.
No, I'll, I'll second that. I'm not clear what's going to come back, but-
The thing, thing.
We can work with staff on, on that in the interim, I guess.
All right, so first and a second to continue this item to a date certain in January. Madam Clerk?
As the mayor said, the item is continued to January tenth. Uh, Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Yeah, it's continued.
All right. Uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. We have a motion-
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It was approved.
All right, uh, nothing under old business, new business. We have our city council meeting schedule?
It's just informational, just for the twenty-twenty-three schedule, um, the council meeting schedule.
Any conflicts or any concerns from anybody?
Again, we used to got a plan to keep the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, but we, but the main one will be the first Tuesday of the month.
And there are no irregularities. They're all on the second Tuesday, so we're fine.
Okay.
And we can always dark whatever we want.
And that's just a receive and file. Um, moving on to reports of council members. I, go ahead. Let me, let me start real quick. I just want to, I do this publicly and give, uh, some kudos to Councilmember Jindal. Uh, we had a presentation last week in front of the County Commission on Schools and, I don't know, it's a long name. But, uh, he did a great job, represented the city and our citizens very, very well. Uh, unfortunately, it didn't kind of turn out the way that, um, that group would have liked. Um, but, uh, very proud of the work that he did and want to thank him for that.
Thank you, Mayor Duper. Um, same, uh, Mayor Duper spoke really positively in support of our residents. Um, unfortunately, we weren't able to get this passed, so just some background, we were trying to make Loma Linda uniform and have it all under one school district. Uh, unfortunately, there were some last-minute additions that we did not get to review, and that seemed to have turned the tide against our favor. Uh, but I know the residents are very passionate about this, and I hope that we can work with all the relevant stakeholders to, uh, do what is best for them and the students that attend the great schools in this area.
Any reports of officers? Okay, let's move on to the housing agenda authority. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anyone wishing to speak on any non-agendized items? No? Okay, seeing nobody run forward, um, the only thing we have here is the consent calendar.
Move it.
Uh, first, and a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve the consent calendar items on the housing authority. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Items are approved.
Any reports of officers? Chair member reports, seeing none. Moving on to the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Here, no. We have the consent calendar also.
Public comment?
Uh, any public comments? Mr. Harrison, no, nothing. Okay, we tried. Um, and we are going to go back into the, uh, city agenda to get to Dick's last comment here, so just so we're not done. Uh, but we have the consent calendar here?
Move it.
First and-
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk on that one?
Motion is to approve, to approve the consent calendar items on the successor agency. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby? Mayor Pratim Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
The items are approved.
Thank you very much. That concludes the successor agency agenda. Going back into the council. Dick, you've got three minutes, and we're holding you to this one.
Dick, I just request an interview.
Doctor Herring?
Yep.
Okay, I was just saying, I was very pleased and appreciated every year when the fire department does their parade around town. Maybe a lot of people are aware of that one, it's going to be this weekend. But very pleased to see what came through and very happy, I think, that fire department is to be, you're actually doing it sort of year, I don't know, many new cities, but it was very, very good and appreciated to, to see that and the support the guys give this town. So, I appreciate that very much, and I wish each one of the members around the council and staff a very, very first person. Happy to do your own things, go ready for everybody.
Same to you, Dick. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, our meeting is adjourned.